Two, one.
Well, good morning. I want to welcome everyone to our first virtual town hall meeting. I know that it's always very difficult to do things in this nature, but it's hard to really do anything together since we've been really quarantined at this point in time. So, wanted to really kind of give you some ideas of really what we're getting ready to do, and that is distance learning. We're going to prepare for you today, a little bit of a presentation to kind of give you an idea of what that's going to look like for our students. But I want to first say this, that our health and safety of kids are number one, and that's the priority. And so, we've made a lot of decisions, and all of those decisions have been making sure that our students, number one, are safe and our staff are safe. And so, I'm hoping that you're staying home, doing social distancing, making sure that you're staying safe. And then, I would also like to thank a lot of the people that have really made all of this possible. We have child nutrition staff that are doing great work every single day. They're preparing food every day. They are doing a breakfast, a lunch, and then on Fridays, we're actually going to begin providing supplies and books. So, we're excited about that literacy piece, trying to make sure that students have that opportunity to have that. So, very proud of the work that they have done. Let me kind of first start out with kind of what the plans are. The State Board of Education has done a fabulous job of keeping us updated. I think that's been our biggest hurdle is really that communication and making sure that we get information in a timely manner, then finding out what we need to do to actually make sure that we get things, waivers, those kinds of things to our Board of Education so that we can actually continue the year. So, what we're going to do first is instruction will begin back on April the 6th, which is next Monday. Next Monday, we will begin to provide you with some details. I'm going to go through that here in a little while, but some of the details will be that, you know, how do you get online? What do you do? All of our students should have Chromebooks and hotspots. We had, I think, 270 that did not have that. And so, we set up the last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday last week. We set some stuff up for people to come in and get those things or those items so that they could secure materials to actually be able to do their work. So, we're down to very few that don't have those devices. So, very glad that we were able to do that. The last day, and this is very important to notice, is that the last day will be May the 8th. We will not have school or instruction provided on Friday, April 10th. April 10th is Good Friday, and so, we will start the 6th. We will go through the 9th. So, the first week, next week, will be four days of instruction, and then we have 20 days after that. So, you're looking at school having 24 days of total instruction. Very important for everybody to understand that really, we're not talking a long period of time, but it is, you know, 24 days of instruction that we are going to provide all of our students. What's the key? You know, and I think this is really important for everybody to understand. What is the key to distance learning? And I think to make it work, number one, you've got to have great communication. Understand that this is a two-way street. Our staff is going to do a very good job of communicating with you. We're asking them to reach out weekly to every student, to every family member. But communication is key, making sure that that is reciprocal and that we're going back and forth. Number two, flexibility. Things change all the time, so we need to make sure that flexibility is happening and that we're doing the very best we can to understand that things do change. And so, being flexible and understanding is very, very important. And then, the third thing that I'm going to say, and this is just from Dr. Mendenhall, let's show grace, show people grace, because people are going to make mistakes. Our teachers are going to make mistakes. Our students are going to make mistakes. More than that, I'm going to make mistakes. What I will tell you is this, is that we are trying to do the very best we can do for our students and for our staff. So, I want to make sure that you understand that if we communicate, we're flexible and show a little grace, I think that would be very, very good and go a long way. Teachers, we have asked, yesterday I had a chance to really spend some time with our staff. We had a virtual meeting, lasted about 45 minutes to an hour, and we talked a lot about this piece, and that is office hours. We have got to make sure that our staff has an opportunity to be available to you. And so, what we're going to do is pre-K and K. So, if you're a pre-Ker or a kindergartner, your staff or your teacher will be available from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. every day. If you're, you know, in a class from first grade through fifth grade, we're going to do the same thing, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then, at the secondary level, which is 6 through 12, we're going to make that from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I bet you guys have all noticed this, the little ones, and it's kind of why we always like going to school early with the younger ones, but they're up at like 6 o'clock in the morning, ready for Cheerios or whatever the case may be and watching cartoons. I noticed that, you know, when I had little kids, little ones in my class or in my household, they were, you know, getting me up early in the morning. So, I bet you've noticed that much more, especially with the younger students. Now, the older ones, they're still in bed right now and probably not even up till noon. So, understanding that that's why we're kind of putting that timeline in, that you're really starting at, you know, the secondary teachers being available from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock. Communications protocols, and I think this is interesting because we had already made this decision, but some things came out today that I think are really good to know. We will have, the way that you will communicate with your instructor or with your teacher will be through email, phone. There's also what is called a class dojo. The students will know how to do all of this, but class dojo, remind, and Google Meet, okay? We will not be using Zoom. The reason we're not using Zoom is that it's really not a secure site. It's not secure enough. In fact, there's some national things that have already occurred, people using the Zoom protocols or platforms, and they've been hacked into and those kinds of things. So, we will not be using that. Now, there may be Zoom meetings that we use for personnel, but know that anytime you're using Google Meet, Remind, Class Dojo, all of those things are recorded on our end so we can go back and actually review that information. So, that's really important for you to know as parents and as community members, that we're protecting our students, protecting our staff, and using a platform that is very, very strong and really has a lot of protocols behind it. I want you to know that each teacher will at least contact or make contact with every student each day or each week, excuse me. What we want to make sure of is that there's communication back and forth. And we felt like that even if it's a graded paper or communication back and forth through an email, that that is appropriate communication. Now, you may get phone calls, you may get those kinds of things, but I will tell you that there should be at least one communication per week from the teacher to the student. Now, the other thing that I want to pass along, we've talked about grades. This is not supposed to be a punitive deal. It's nobody's fault that we're in a pandemic right now. So, I want to make sure that you understand this, is that our students didn't cause this to occur. This is something that we need to make sure that they have really a positive experience through a virtual process that we're trying to go through. So, I want to help you understand that from pre-K through the fifth grade, we are giving pass/fail grades from this point forward. So, during that 24 hour or 24 days, okay? We're going to be giving pass/fail grades from pre-K all the way up through fifth grade. 6 through 12 will give letter grades, and they will be given at least two assignments per week. So, if you look at all the weeks, you really are looking at five different weeks. There's going to be two assignments per week, so you're looking at 10 grades basically during that timeframe for every student to be given an opportunity to really bring their grade up. So, that does not mean that there are past assignments that maybe a student didn't perform very well or maybe they have a zero, whatever. That teacher may want to ask that student to make that work up or to retake something, and that is absolutely fine as well. But wanted you to know that for the, really, the five weeks or the 24 days, what our expectation is, is that we will have two assignments per week. Let me kind of talk a little bit now about, you know, what my child right now, what are we supposed to be doing? And I don't mean to laugh about this, but boy, the sunshine is really our friend right now. If we have sunshine outside, at least they can get outside and play and move around. Staying inside and being cooped up is really, really hard. I would recommend that you provide opportunities for your kids to do different things, whether it's coloring, whether it's playing board games, whether it's reading a book or going outside and kicking a soccer ball. I think those activities and different things, you know, it's kind of funny. We do appreciate teachers much more. I don't know about you, but with little ones, you definitely appreciate the teachers and the work that they do each day. We're going to talk about the recommended time for students. And I think this is really important to understand, is that when you have students that are at home, you need to provide a very good opportunity for them to have an area that they actually study. So, I want to talk a little bit about that because I think that's really important to know about. One is, let's try to make sure that we set up a routine. A routine is really, really important because waking up at a certain time, going to bed, still having a bedtime that you go to bed, and actually going through a routine each day is very important for students. Having a location that is free from a lot of outside noise and outside distractions is really important as well. You know, I love it, I remember my own two children, they would sit on the couch, watch TV, and try to do homework. And I would always say, you know, we have desks, we have places for you to go and sit, even at the kitchen table, and they would always push back. So, I would tell you, I'm giving you the permission. Provide a great spot for your kid to actually do their work. And then, the other thing that I wanted to say is how much time should it be taking us each day? In pre-K or kindergarten, we're looking at 45 minutes in a day. So, what I would not do is take your child and put them down and say, okay, now you've got to sit still and you've got to just do your work for 45 minutes, especially if they're a four or five-year-old, okay? That's very difficult. So, it might be 15-minute increments, it might be 10 minutes doing something and then going back and doing something else. So, keep that in mind. First through fifth grade, we're looking at 90 minutes, and I'm going to focus on this. Reading is very, very important. Literacy is very important, especially first grade through fifth grade. Those are the very important years for reading and reading comprehension. So, what I would tell you is that within that 90 minutes, the majority of that time should be either reading a book, reading something, and actually writing down what you just learned. You know, all of those things count. So, I would tell you that making sure that even working crosswords, doing different puzzles, doing all kinds of different things, even online, I think is very important for everybody to understand that reading as much as possible from first grade through fifth grade is going to really make a huge difference. So, but the total time each day should be about 90 minutes for those children. And then, sixth grade through 12th grade, we have three hours per day. And I will tell you, if you break it up, really 30 minutes for each teacher or each subject that they're taking makes a whole lot of sense. So, they may have math, and then they have history, and then science, social studies, whatever the case may be. What I would say is they're really got 30 minutes at each one of those. So, a total of three hours is really important. You know, one of the things that we will do as a school district is we are having a board meeting or what's called a special board meeting on Thursday. And that special board meeting, what we will do is we will accept a lot of the waivers from the State Department. And that, what that really means is that things like waiving CPR stuff, waiving some of the testing and the state mandated testing, waiving different items that really make a whole lot of sense to not do at the end of the school year. So, we're doing that Thursday at noon and making sure that we do that. And let me kind of talk a little bit about the seniors. I tell you, my heart just goes out to them. I know that there are some culminating events that we always do. We always have a really big graduation, we have a prom, we have, you know, an awards banquet. All of those things are really those great culminating events that we always do. And I will say that they're not going to have those this year. They are not going to, you know, be able to go through those events. However, what we're doing right now is really kind of evaluating, how can we still do this sometime in the summer? How could we do maybe a weekend or something to where you would start with maybe on Friday night, a prom that evening, the next day, in the middle of the day, we have graduation at noon or at 1:00 o'clock, and then the next day, we have an awards assembly. So, those are the things that we're all having conversations about. Ms. Fleek is the high school principal, and she and I are really having those conversations to really try to honor those students of the class of 2020, very, very special students, and we want to make sure that we honor them. So, again, my heart goes out to them. I'm really so sorry for those things that have happened. But I will tell you that I'm always one of those, I always look at the glass half-full, and I actually think we could really probably set a trend or a tradition of something different. And so, hopefully, that can happen with these students. One of the things that I have been talking, or a lot of people have talked to me about is really the connectivity. And what I will tell you is that every student in our district, and this is not the case. I mean, we have 5,387 students in our school district. And I will tell you that every one of them have the access or the ability to have a Chromebook. Those Chromebooks are like a laptop, and basically, they have all of their assignments, all of those things can be loaded onto that. Their textbooks, all of that can be loaded into that Chromebook. The other piece to that, there's a lot of schools that have those, but the other piece to that is that we have what's called a hotspot, and that is connectivity to the internet. We have T-Mobile hotspots that we went into partnership with them. It was about a $1.2 million proposition, and we have provided every single student a hotspot. So, the good piece to that or good part to that is that there are so many opportunities for us to really do virtual learning and do it well. I want to give you a number because I think this will be helpful for everybody. The Technology Help Desk, I think, is very important because if you have issues, maybe you have a connection problem, maybe where you're located, you live out a little ways, I want to make sure that you have this number. It is 918-684-3700 and extension 4357. Again, 918-684-3700, extension 4357. That is the Technology Help Desk, and I will tell you, our technology folks do a fabulous job here. And if you will reach out to them, they will actually assist you. Some other things I want to mention because I think this is important. One of the things is that the enrollment process for next year. A lot of you are sitting there saying, okay, what can we do for our kids right now? Well, I will tell you, the rest of this week, you could sit down and actually fill out your enrollment information. The enrollment process for 2020, '21 is open, and this is a great time to get online and make sure that you're doing that. You can do enrollment, what you can enroll in is it's called enrollment@roughers.net. Again, it is enrollment@roughers.net. So, I encourage you to do that. The other thing is the high school students, their coursework, they, there's only, there's course requests that they have to make because they take their core classes and then they have what are called electives. And so, students can get on their Chromebook and go to Power School and actually make those selections because we're trying to make sure that we get prepared for next year. Others have asked me, what about summer? What are we going to do this summer? And I will tell you, that's the other thing, is some of my best memories of, you know, high school and junior high was really not only the school, but also those memories of doing activities and going to camps and doing those things in the summertime. I will tell you, it's, everything's on hold right now. And I want you to understand that we're really sorry about that, but until we have really confirmation that people are safe, I'm hoping that we're going to have something to start with sometime in June and be able to do everything from Summer Pride to Band Camp to Camp Bennett. All of those things that we do in the summer to enhance the opportunities for our children are there. It's just a matter of how safe can we continue to be? So, really don't know on that at this point in time, and hopefully, we will be able to do that. The next thing I want to talk about is really what is called e-learning. It's our virtual learning platform. You can see behind me, there is a template that's been put out. All of this stuff is going to be online. And what it really does, it tells you really some of the information I've talked about today, but it will, it will take you item by item about what is my child supposed to be doing. There are pull-down menus for first grade. You'll have all kinds of different icons there that will tell you some enrichment opportunities. But more than that, I want to explain kind of what's going to happen for each one of the grade levels. First off, Google Classroom. Google Classroom is really the platform that we will use when we deliver virtual education. So, want you to understand that at the high school level, they will be doing Google Classroom. Let me kind of go through some of the high school areas because I do think that's going to be semi-difficult because they're enrolled in so many different things. We have concurrent enrollment. Students that are involved in concurrent enrollment, their college professor should have already gotten out or been in contact with them. I've got a daughter actually in school right now, and she's online. I mean, everything's virtual right now. Indian Capital Technology Center, so if your student goes to tech, they will be in contact with you. We also have a program called Courseware. Courseware is an online learning product that some of our students are involved in. And actually, I will tell you, it's the easiest because it's really what we're already doing. And so, those students stay on, online for that. I'm going to go to the sixth grade academy. Again, their platform will be Google Classroom. They're familiar with that. The teachers are familiar with that, and that's how they'll do their assignments. They actually have Alpha Plus for math and Imagine Learning for literacy. So, those are two pieces that they already do, and the teachers will continue to work through that. At the seventh and eighth grade academy, we have Google Classroom again. We have Alpha Plus Math and Alpha Plus for English and Language Arts. So, those are pretty simple things for them. And then, for elementary, we have really what are called a Google Classroom, but also Study Island, which is second grade through fifth grade. Study Island is an online program. Again, the teachers are going to be communicating this. This is not something that's going to be just something brand-new to the students and brand-new to everybody else. It's really something that really helps them understand content much better. Kindergarten first, they'll do what is called Reading Eggs. Reading Eggs, again, is a literacy product that really helps students with reading and reading comprehension. So, that kind of tells you a little bit about that. There has been a lot of conversation about, should we be doing paper packets or assignments? The reason we're going against that is we don't feel, first off, we have connectivity. We have the opportunity because our students are connected and we're able to get that information out. But we feel like it's safer because paper packets, they're saying that it can actually be, you know, this virus can carry through mail and other things. So, in our mind, we're saying, let's not have paper copies of anything. Everything's going to be done through a virtual platform in that we will not have paper packets. So, we're trying very hard to stay away from that. I know that some districts have no choice because that's how they're conducting business. So, we're excited to be able to do that. With that, I think I've covered quite a bit of information. I know I've spoken for about 30 minutes now, and so, what I want to do is try to answer questions. I know that questions are popping up as we go through this, and I want to try to answer some of those at this time. So, I have Eric Wells with me here today. He is helping me do all of this, and he'll ask some of those questions, and we'll try to answer those. So, Eric, what kind of questions are we getting in?
Sure, we have a question about receiving a permit for driver's test, entry driver's test. Do we have any of that yet?
They have been postponed or suspended.
Okay, driver's permits have been, one of the, the question was, what is the issues with driver permits and all that? Everything has been postponed and put on hold at this point in time. I know that you're supposed to have a reading exam or a reading test, that you have to have proof of that. Of course, our sites are closed down at this point. I've held everybody out of our schools, so we'll have to wait till everything is lifted.
Have we thought about doing anything virtually for graduation?
We have thought, you know, the question was, have you thought about doing anything virtually for graduation? We have. The thing about that is it's the minimum that we would do. We definitely will do something, you know, virtually. It may be something that we need to do, but I will tell you that there's nothing like the excitement and the feeling and the buzz that comes around when you actually graduate. So, really wanting to recreate that as best we can and have, do something in person, have speeches, have a physical shaking of hand and receiving your diploma. I think those are really meaningful events. So, but yes, we'll look at virtual if that's the case that we need to do, we'll definitely do that.
Can we reiterate a little bit on what the K through 5 plan is with pass/fail? And then, 6 through 12 with two assessments a week? That's a question we have.
Okay, the question was, can you elaborate more on the pass/fail? Here's what I will tell you, that a lot of pre-K through fifth grade, we don't give grades in the first place. We really, it's about the content standards and making sure that they have those. So, pre-K through second grade, really, not many grades at all are given. Three through five, basically, what we're trying to do is make sure that they have enough that they can go to the next grade, have enough content to go to the next grade. So, really, we felt like that pass/fail, which is at 70%, okay? I know that a lot of people will say, well, isn't that a C? Yes, but we want our kids passing at a 70% rate. Yes, but we want our kids passing at a 70% rate. We don't want students that barely get past the 60%. And I know that changes a lot of people, people's thought process, but we really want you. So that's the pass, fail piece is, you know, really a lot of Language Arts and Math, okay? The other piece is really a, you know, the A, B, C, D, F. When you look at 6th Grade through 12th Grade, really it makes a whole lot of sense. Right now, when they left on March 12th, the last day of school, basically what happens is they had a grade, a letter grade, if you were any of those grade, any of those classes. So our feeling is that they, they need to be given an opportunity to have grades taken in this five-week timeframe so that they can actually raise their grades as best they can. So if I have a C right now in math class or Algebra 1, for instance, I need other assignments to maybe get my grade up to a B. So we're excited about providing those opportunities, but not only that, making sure that they have the skills that they've built on to get to the next level.
And just a little bit further on that, will the e-learning plan incorporate activities for pre-K?
The e-learning plan will, will incorporate activities for pre-K. What I would say is Dr. Lindsay, our principal at the ECC, she is doing a great job of kind of communicating and putting things online. But I will tell you that our intention is that on e-learning, you'll be able to look at those things as well. I think they have another website that they utilize, that they've been putting stuff out there, but we'll make sure that information is included so that you'll have that. By the way, the e-learning website, all of that information will be pushed out this, actually today, later today. So our intention is for you to look at it. Again, assignments don't begin today. Assignments and those kinds of things don't begin until April 6th, which is next Monday. So I want to make sure that you understand that even though we're putting all of this out, that we have this information, that doesn't mean we get started right now. What it means is that at least it gives you a chance to look at it, to review it, get comfortable with it, so that when we start, we'll start right off the bat. The other thing that you're going to receive is you're going to receive a letter from myself, and also, this is a letter that is explaining kind of what we're doing starting April 6th. The other thing that you'll receive is the same thing from your principal. So you'll receive two correspondence, one from the superintendent and one from the principal that kind of tells you that we will begin officially with our instructional model on April the 6th.
A question about the board meeting coming up later this week. Will it be open to the public live stream?
You know, per the law, the question was, will it be open to the public on April 6th? What we're going to do is we're going to broadcast this, and so people can see it in real time. But because of really Robert's Rule of Order, we've got to make sure that every board meeting is open. That's by law. I know a lot of those things have been relaxed, but I will tell you that I'm a big proponent in making sure that we have a lot of transparency and that we follow what the Open Meetings Act says. So yes, the answer is that it is an open meeting. Now, I can't have more than 10 people in this room. So you have five board members, myself and the clerk, that's seven people. So what I would tell you is that I would really encourage you to watch online. If there's questions, those kinds of things, we'll definitely get back to you. We never want to close a board meeting because that's really not an appropriate thing to do.
A few parents wondering about 3rd grade retention with reading tests.
Very good. The 3rd grade retention test, what I would say is that we're at this point giving no more exams for 3rd grade retention and remediation. So what we will have to go back to, if there are students or children on the line, we'll have to go to a portfolio model. Don't forget that in that portfolio, it has a lot of different information. We'll go back to some start, what's called STAR tests, and look at that information for promotion and/or remediation. So our, our hope is that children, that's why it's so important to continue to read with your children and doing those kinds of things at home. But we're trying to do our very best to make sure that all of that information is out there and that we do the right thing for every single child. You know, I think it's really important for everybody to understand that, you know, the most prized possession that we have is our own children. And that doing the right thing for them is really important to us because we know that they're your prized possession. So we're going to look at every single thing and make sure that we do the right thing for every child.
Can we go back to this, the last day of school again? And once that day comes, how do we go back, getting our tools, books, laptops, the things we have back to the school?
Great question. Once we go, question was, how do we get our stuff back? Once we've utilized all of our stuff, you know, we have our last day. How do we do checkout, basically? What will happen is we will put back out to the community that after the 8th, I don't anticipate it being right after May 8th. What I anticipate, it will be later in June potentially. And what we'll do is we'll set up some dates and times for people to bring back materials. Things like, you know, Chromebooks, hotspots, textbooks, maybe uniforms, band equipment, all of those kinds of things. We're going to have to set up a timeline or a timeframe for students and, and parents to bring that stuff back.
Lots of questions on IEP meetings and how those can be completed.
Great question. I know there's a lot of children that are on what are called IEPs, Individual Education Plans. And our intention right now is we will continue to hold all of those meetings. Now, don't forget what I talked about at the beginning. Communication, flexibility, and showing grace. We are going to do our very best to make sure every single IEP meeting is, is held appropriately and done correctly. We will reach out to you. If there's an IEP that is due, then we will definitely be setting that up. And maybe it will have to be done remotely. We may not be able to do it in person, and most of those are going to have to be done remotely. But we want everybody to have the opportunity to have their plan updated, same as, same as for the 504s. So 504s and IEPs, we're having those conversations right now. I know our special ed staff is really a bit inundated because we have a lot of IEPs due. And so you will be contacted and communicated with to make sure that we're in compliance and that the plan is being followed for every one of our children. So those things should be happening within the next few days. You'll start receiving information. Please check emails. Please make sure that, and if you have a question, call. Call the, the site. Principals should be able to help you navigate those waters a little bit. Again, communication, flexibility, and grace are going to be the three things that you're going to have to be careful with because that is going to be huge, especially in this situation.
We want also to add that if you've moved in the last few weeks or have a new phone number, please email enrollment to update your information for communication.
Very big. If you've moved or changed location and you've never contacted the Enrollment Center to change your address, phone number, and all of that, that's how we communicate. So please, please, if those things have happened, please send that to the Enrollment Center. I gave that to you a while ago. Even if you want to send them an email, enrollment@ruffers.net, you could actually do that. But really, those kinds of things are really important, especially if you've moved from one location to another.
Will Advanced Placement, Advanced Placement tests or other tests be available for taking in the summer?
What I do know at this point about Advanced Placement, my understanding is that the College Board is actually doing a lot of work on their end to provide access for students to take the test. Remember, that's, we all know that, you know, if you make a 3 or, or higher, 3, 4, or 5, there's a good chance that when you go to college, you're going to get college credit for, for some of that work. So it's important to us for you to take those exams. Get on the College Board website, and they're giving you great information about either taking the exam or what the next steps are. My understanding is that they're going to make accommodations for that and may even extend into the, into the summer. So trying to do that would be helpful.
And we're providing them a link on the website.
Okay, we are also providing you a link on the website. So when we open this up later today, that will be helpful as well.
Do we have any plans to expand the summer feeding program to more sites?
Summer feeding program has been, gosh, what a, what a great, great opportunity. We've had a great number, about 1,200 or 1,300 students a day are being provided food. Our intention is to extend that into the summertime and to do the same exact thing. Right now, I think we've got four locations, four school sites, and we're up to about six, I think, locations that we're actually taking food to different areas. So we'll get that information out very soon for the summer. Our focus has really been on making sure that we get all of this inform, or all of the food and, and different things through the end of the school year because a lot of our students really rely on a well-balanced meal, at least for that breakfast and lunchtime.
If they think they're being missed, if we'll, we'll put an email to Kim Hall. They can let us know and maybe just think about another area if they feel like they're not.
If you feel like, that, that's a huge thing. Last week, we had a couple of emails from people that said the Whittier area was really being overlooked. And so we added a location at Whittier, and we're actually spending a lot of time giving out meals and different things at Whittier. So that helped probably about 50 to 75 children. If you know of an area, please let us know. You can even just email us on the website, but let us know because we want to make sure that we reach out and make sure that every student is fed.
Is there a certain time to have our students logged in doing work?
You know, in e-learning, the question was, is there any particular time that kids can log in and do their work? What's really nice about this platform, an e-learning platform, is that the work can be done at any time. I mean, they know that really 24/7, basically any time during the day or any time during the week, they can be logged in doing their work. Now, don't forget that we have office hours for our staff. Again, you know, it's, you know, either in the elementary, it's 9 to 12, or at the secondary level, it's, it's basically 10:00 to 1:00. So I think it's, it's really important for you to kind of think through that. Think about when that best time is for your student to be doing their work. And then always remember that you have access to, to staff and instruction or teachers during those times of office times.
Just looking to me about it, I think we're looking to learn a guide.
Well, I want to say thank you for tuning in today. I want to, I'm very excited about, really, I'm looking at, again, this half-full. It's an opportunity. E-learning is something that I think is the, the wave of the future. I think this is how, not every child will want this kind of learning, but I will tell you that a mixed or a mixed method of providing education is really probably the right thing we should be doing. So having school person-to-person, the socialization, coming to school every day, that's one way. And then you've got kind of a mixed approach to where you also have online learning that's mixed with that. I think that's really where we're headed in public education. And you can see now that it's really kind of forced our hand to really ramp up and really do the things that we've had to do to make sure that virtual learning can be done and people are capable of making it happen. I want to just thank our staff. We have a great, great staff here at Muskogee Public Schools. Not only do we have great administrators, but we have great teachers, great support staff. Every single person has stepped up. Anything that we've asked them to do, they've said, how can I help? What can I do? And how long, you know, it doesn't matter how long it takes, they'll spend the time to make it happen. So I want to say first off, thank you to those folks. And then to you, thank you for being patient. Thank you for all the work that you do with your children. I know that this is a different time. I always think about, when my grandparents were alive, they used to talk about the times that during the World War II and, and the soup, soup lines and different things that they had to do, that everything kind of stopped across America and really the focus was on the war. And this really kind of reminds me of those conversations they used to have with me is that we've really kind of paused and, and stopped everything. What I want you to do though is really embrace this moment, embrace this moment with your children. I'm doing more with, with my family than I've done in years. I've spent probably more time the last two weeks at home than I've probably spent in two years. But it's the right thing to do. We're engaging with each other. We're talking, having more conversations, putting devices down and really having those family moments and times. So want to encourage you to.